Okay, I want to call our October Board Meeting to order. At this time, I'm going to ask one of our high school students, Mr. Jordan Shelton, if he could come up and open us in a word of prayer, and then lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll take my mask off so I can hear me a little bit better. But if you would, back ahead for a word of prayer. Father God, I want to thank you for tonight, and thank you for letting us all be here tonight. I'd like to thank you for all the people on the board representing Lincoln County High School. And I pray that you give them wisdom tonight, Father God, and help lead them in God and tonight in all the decisions that are going to be made tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. I believe I stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on our agenda is the consent items consisting of the agenda, minutes of the September 8th, 2020 meeting, fundraiser, Principal Student Advisory Committee, fundraiser for varsity cheerleaders, fundraisers for girls' basketball, fundraiser for middle school PTP, rental of facility, and policy for deletion, GBQ professional personnel retirement.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to accept the consent items. I have a second by D., Ms. Parkesville. All in favor?
No.
opposed? Four to one.
Do we have any public participation?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rimmer. Okay, we'll move into our financials with Ms. Buffer.
The first thing we have is the year end. I usually try to get that to you in September, but it was a little bit later this year before we got everything closed out. So this is as of the end of June 2020. So this is with 100% of the year complete at the end of our fiscal year. And you can see that we collected 102% of our revenues, which, as I tell you always, budget conservatively. So we wind up with more revenues and less expenditures. Our expenditures were at 95.2% out of the 100%. So at the end of the year, we wound up with cash in the bank of about 3.2 million and a fund equity of 2.375 million. If you remember back in our budget, we had projected a budgeted end of the year fund balance of $1,459,749. So we actually wound up being better off by $915,358. So we had actually budgeted to use 787,763 of our fund balance, when in actuality, we increased it by 127,595. Part of that's due to my budgeting, but part of that is also due to closing down the schools, we didn't use the buses, so fuel was lower. Some of the HVAC and those kind of things were lower. So part of that is that, and part of that is my budgeting. But you can see, we did end up the year with 2.375 billion in the fund equity account. Back to the current year, we now have 25% of our fiscal year complete through the end of September, and we have 17.71. I don't know if I can see. Or to see, 17.71% of our revenues collected. A couple of those, we talked about the, I separated out the Forest Land Protection Act grant, because that's a separate account number from the local ad lorm tax, and we'll separate out part of that budget to cover that when we amend the budget. But you can see, our title ad lorm tax is doing quite well, 53.98%, when we're at only 25% of the year. Property taxes, of course, are low. They always are this time of the year. But the property tax bills did go out, I believe, last Saturday. So some revenue will start coming in. And of course, we should have a good bit of that collected to have a bit of December on their view. On the bottom, you can look at, see here where it says federal money, that is actually impact aid money that we did, excuse, not impact aid money. That's the flood control money. I had budgeted based on last year's figure of $828, so we did get a little bit more this year, so we can adjust the budget to match that figure. But that is the flood control, not the impact aid. On the expenditure side, everything looks in reason. We are at 23.9% at 25% of the year. And I look back at last year's, we were at 23.22% of our budget last year. So we're quite in line with where we stood last year as far as our expenditures compared to budget. The money in the bank, we've got about 2.2 million, or had about 2.2 million at the end of September. And our fund balance at that point was 1.3 million. You'll remember, the previous month was about 1.5 million. It is going down, which is normal this time of the year until we do get those tax collections. So you can see that we started with the 2.375, took in the revenues of 1.969, expenditures 3.025. So we've got the 1.3 in our general fund equity at the end of September. On our SPOS fund, not quite as good news as the two, as the, what, four previous months, but still above our budget. We budgeted 50,000 a month. We got 54,216.69. So still doing well, just not quite as well as it had been for the previous month. But that does give us enough to cover our bond payment. We made that payment on September 30th. It was due October 1st, 401-862-50. Still leaves us in our SPOS account 173,467.99. In our bond fund account, 369,376.86. So we've got 542,000 towards that April 1st payment that's 1.1 billion. Should not be a problem with the SPOS staying the way it is. And then, of course, we'll get our bond tax collection started. They'll pick up. You can see where I add the percentages there. The SPOS is at 33.65% of what we have budgeted after only three months. And the bond tax is only at 4.34%. So, but that will pick up now that the notices have gone out. No change in the capital projects other than a little bit of interest. So we've still got about 52,000 there available for projects that we need them for.
Any questions for Ms. Buffer? Go ahead, Ms. Rimmer.
I have one for Ms. Buffer, and then I have one for you, Mr. Chair, that you may want to direct to the superintendent. I'll go with yours first, because then that way she can answer both if they're referred to her being Ms. Buffer. Doing the budget and doing all of our budget reports, our financial reports, we hear about the principals' reports per school, but we've never heard the BOE fee reports for this office. And those fees would come from the college that's written a space, the other facilities that's being rented. And those fees come to this office. So why do we never get a report of the money that's taken in through the Board of Education, the fees that are paid here, such as the fees that come for out-of-state tuition or out-of-county tuition, and the others that I previously stated?
Is that in the local other?
That should be in the financial reports. There's a separate item for money collected through this office. We do that for each school, and it used to be done for this office as well. So I'm just wondering why we don't know?
Well, that money, it's part of our budget. The things that, like the rent and things of that nature, because we expect that. And that's part of the budget.
How do we know it's, Mr. Chair? If I can finish. I hear your excuses and your statements, but how do we know that that money is actually being paid when we don't have any record of receipt? We have no record that it was collected. We have no reports from the superintendent or the financial officer of those monies being collected. So you say they're in the budget. But I dare to question you on that, because how could it be in the budget when it's money owed to us?
Ms. Rimmer?
So anyway, that's neither here nor there.
Now, wait, do you want an answer, or are you just going to talk?
You know the answer?
I will give you an answer.
But do you know? I want the finance people to answer this.
Well, why'd you ask me? Okay.
I asked you, and I said in my question that you could.
I will use Ms. Buffer. I've said in audits every year that I've been on this board, everything we do gets audited, much more detailed than anything you could look through. So as far as wondering if it's there or not, yes, it's there. Now, as far as if you want to see it broken down, if you want to see every month, I mean, we see superintendent's reports. That's not part of our budget. I mean, the high school reports and the principal reports, that's not part of our budget. That's, they're just letting us know what is coming in, what is going out. And so we do have some information on that. But those items you just mentioned, those are budgeted items.
Rental expenditures are, but receipts, getting the money, is not. So it can be, as you say, quote, "in the budget." But how do we know? And my question again, and I'll make it as simple as I can. How do we know that there are actually receipts of checks? Or whether it's directly deposited? How do we know that it's in our accounts? Your word is not good enough.
You don't have to take my word. We have a state auditor that looks at everything we do. It looks at everything we do. That's not my word.
No, but stop and let me finish. Then you can talk. But we can't both talk at the same time. As I was saying before I was interrupted by the chair, I hear what you're saying. And you can say that all day long. But we're supposed to be good stewards of the money. So there should be a paper trail. And your not willingness to show that paper trail puts in my mind that something is gravely wrong, because we are supposed to be transparent. So I don't see the problem with transparency. But obviously, you have a problem with being transparent with the people's money. Because this is, at the end of the day, this school system belongs to the citizens of this county, not to you, not to me. We're just the stewards. And we have a responsibility to be fiduciarily transparent with the people's money. So again, my question is, in a more simpler term, where's the documentation? Where's the receipts? Where's the report of the intake of fees, et cetera, and so on, that this office takes in every month?
The money is.
Wait a minute, Ms. Buffer. Are you finished? Are you finished?
Due to your sarcasm, Mr. Chair.
Are you finished?
Go ahead.
So you're finished. Ms. Buffer, would you please answer that question?
The money is posted in local other. That goes, you can see the account numbers there are 1310 through 1995. So that takes into account any rent that we receive, any student tuition that we receive, any interest income, and any miscellaneous income that we collect. Now, if you need the details.
So what was it for this month, then?
Well, for the year, it's 33,108.50. Now, I can go back and give you the detail for each month and what each count is if you want that.
It would, like, as I said earlier, it would just be more transparent if we had that each month, like you give the report for the SPOS and this and that. It would be very transparent and fiduciarily responsible to have that report, Mr. Chair, every month. Because, as I say, numbers can say anything. I'm just wondering.
Is there a specific?
Okay, then tell me this. How much do we usually get for, from the east, the college?
We get no money from the college. We have an agreement with them to use our property.
Okay, how much do we get from the others?
$600. From the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners for family.
So the taxpayers are footing the bill on the light?
It's coming from the Board of Commissioners.
The college uses?
Oh, yes. We're paying the power bill, yes. Sorry, I didn't understand your question.
And what's that power bill over there?
I would have to look. I can't, I can't keep those figures in my head. If you ask me ahead of the Board meeting, I can have this stuff ready for you.
Mr. Chair, that's the last question I have on the financials.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Buffer or about the financials? Thank you, Ms. Buffer. We'll move next to a presentation by Mr. Marcus Mason.
I'll be quick, Mr. Chair. Where should I stand?
Right there, it'll be fine?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Board. I'll be quick. I think most Board members, can I take this off? Most Board members have already been informed that I want to make this presentation. I'm going to read a bio right quick. Lincoln County Schools. In your purpose statement, you say, "Where students reach their fullest potential through world-class learning grounded in small-town values." And after reading your purpose statement, I want to honor a person. I'll just read part of his bio. I won't read all of it, because most of you know him. His education, Lincoln County High School, diploma, 1964. Georgia Institute of Technology. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in industrial management, 1968. He was captain of a football team at Georgia Tech, 1967. He was an All-American at Georgia Tech, 1967. He got the Fox Theatre Award for Best Defensive Player, 1968. He went to the University of Georgia, got his master's and doctorate degree in education. Work experience, he worked, he played for Miami Dolphins. He played for the New England Patriots. He played for the Baltimore Colts. He worked at Charles Elam Surveying. He worked Lincoln County Schools as an administrator or teacher. And he worked for Lincoln County Schools as superintendent. Thirty years. His professional affiliates, he's with the Georgia Association of Leaders, Georgia Schools Superintendent's Association, Georgia High School Association, CSR Aresel Board. His church activities and community activities. He was on the Linkington Lions Club, Lincoln Health Board, Leadership Linkington, Lincoln County Little League, and Greenwood Baptist Church. So all of you probably know who I'm talking about right now. What I like to do is designate a building in honor of George Randall Edmonds. As you see, he's an outstanding citizen. He's been superintendent of schools. He was an All-American here at Linkington, with the Georgia Tech, All-American. Just an outstanding citizen. Think you mentioned, Chairman, when I was on the board, that we have a campus of honor. And on that campus, there's an old high school that he went to, the old Linkington, Linkington High School. And I request that the Board name that building, the Dr. Randall Edmonds Building. And also request that, it was a federal building, built by federal funds in 1936. Also request that the Board make every effort to keep that building, whatever it takes. I know it's in disrepair, but if there are discussions about tearing it down, I hope that you would think hard about that and not do it. It's a historic building. It was built by federal funds, so I'm not sure that you can even do it legally. Again, I request that the building be named Randall Edmonds Building, Dr. Randall Edmonds Building. And I'll have to work on the funding. I know there's a procedure for funding and all of that. But I just ask that you set aside that building in honor of Dr. Edmonds. I don't think we can honor him in any way. I drove around the campuses, and I noticed that there is a Thomas Botch Fieldhouse. There's a Buddy Buffett Field. There's a Larry Campbell Stadium. There's an Edwin Burgess Bus Shop. There's a Welcome Members to Mason Campus of Excellence. So I didn't find anything in honor of Dr. Edmonds, and he's done a great job. And I think, back to your purpose statement, you talk about small-town leadership, small-town values. I think Dr. Edmonds portrays that in the greatest way. One of the most outstanding citizens ever to leave this county and to return and to work for us. So again, subject to your questions. Do you have any questions at all, Board?
Do you have a timeline?
No, ma'am, just. Actually, I was sitting at a football game the other night. I looked back in the stands, and he was sitting behind me. And then I looked around. I said, man, we're not even honoring this great guy. So it just popped up. The Lord asked me to put it on my heart, so I'm here to beg you to name that building after him. And if not, then I'll find something else. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
I do have one follow-up. As it relates to honoring people, just a note. I was sitting at a football game as well, and I listened to the announcer, the first game of the season. He said, Welcome Members to Mason Campus of Excellence, Larry Campbell Stadium, Buddy Buffett Field. I thought that was great. The next game, I heard the announcer say, Buddy Buffett Field, Larry Campbell Stadium. Yeah, not quite, not quite the full announcement that should be made. Last week, I was sitting at a JV game, and the announcer just said, please stand for the National Anthem. So I think we need to standardize our announcements at our games and make sure that at every possible occasion, we honor the people that we set aside and be honored for. Thank you.
And just to kind of go back through, for those of you who may not know, from our policy, we try to, when something is presented of this nature, is that we want it to sit and, so that we get county input on it, and it's not just a decision by our Board.
Understand, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for presenting for it.
Thank you. Allow me.
Next on the agenda is the Local Board Governance Training Plan for 2020, 2021.
We all understand that COVID has rearranged how GSBA provides training. We are all hoping and praying that this COVID is killed and goes away, and we can get back to some sort of normalcy. That being said, I contacted Washington Wilkes as we have done our whole board training and our GSBA training with Washington Wilkes for many years in the past. However, just as last year, we could not due to COVID. In contacting that superintendent, she identified that they plan to have that same training within that first week of May, somewhere around the second or third of May, as they have done in the past. If they're allowed to have it, was her statement. So I would ask the Board, if you are under the impression and still want to do that, would we like to continue to pursue that with Washington Wilkes? And Tolliver County also joined us at times, too. And we can do that, which helps reduce our cost, because we only pay for one-third of GSBA's price instead of all of it for them coming here. Or we could approach it from a different angle. But I did check with Washington, and they are planning on doing it again.
Any questions or any comments on it? As you said, that's our most cost-effective way of doing our training, if we can do that.
And it's done in one day.
And this, this far out, if you can put in your schedule, and go and set it up for that. Okay, and that's what, that's how we're planning for it. All right, we need to, we do need a motion.
Yes.
A few seconds for that, too.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Madison to approve this training plan. Second by Mr. Hyten. All in favor? Opposed? Next on our agenda is a non-resident enrollment request.
Okay, Board members, you can see, excuse me, the name in front of you. That is a student that is at the elementary school. That student has, has been at the elementary school, and that parent does live in McCormick. They also own property here, but it is not developed property. They are planning on developing it. They have yet to start. So they would have to pay tuition until they have a dwelling to live in on that property that they own in Lincoln County. So this would be a non-resident request. This is a current student, and this student is doing well in Lincoln County. And you can see that it was approved by the principal on the bottom.
And just as a reminder, that tuition monthly?
Is 3,000, I'm sorry, you said monthly. I apologize. For the year, it's $3,300.
And what is it monthly?
I believe it's 275 or 285.
And where do they pay it?
They pay it here at the front office.
Now, when did the child start here?
Child has started.
When, I said, my question was when?
In kindergarten.
I believe the child started in kindergarten.
So did they used to live here?
No, ma'am. This was one of those that we had talked about last month, that the thought process was that they were going to break ground and that they were going to start. So it was not pursued by prior administration. As we went through permanent records, they found that they had not broken ground, nor had they moved. So the new principal is doing what she is supposed to do in reviewing all of these and has found this one and the next one. As we look at the next one on the agenda.
So what grade is this child?
Third.
So they've been here since?
K.
Since?
Kindergarten.
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 And we were actually accounting for them kindergarten through second as a resident.
So let me understand this. The child was here legally or illegally?
Technically, it was illegally, although we were counting them as a resident of Lincoln County, so we didn't lose any funds.
So we illegally counted an illegal student since kindergarten to third grade?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So we broke the law, and nobody saw that?
Well, unfortunately, it was not caught, no. The prior principal did not catch it.
But how did you, as a superintendent, not catch it?
I'm sorry, I don't review each one of these individually.
So that's your excuse, and you stick me to it, okay? So now you want to make this legal because they got caught?
Because Ms. Arthur went through records, and she saw it. And so, yes, we're going to make, it is known by us. Yes, that is the plan.
So you are going to reward people for breaking the law because they make this statement that, that the superintendent made, that they're doing great here? So if anybody else breaks the law, y'all going to reward them, too?
Ms. Rimmer?
I'm asking a question. It's a legitimate question, whether you agree with it.
I'm not rewarding anyone. I am, we've caught them. I mean, there's people speed by this road all the time. You know what? And most of the time, they don't get caught. When they get caught, they pay a fine.
So what's the fine? Are you asking them to reimburse them from K to third grade?
No. We got paid for them. We got paid. If you want to go to the state and make a case against Lincoln County because we reported a kid that wasn't really a resident, go ahead, do it again. But right now, this is our plan. We caught it. The administration is trying to correct it, just like we did last month. I mean, we've had this discussion. This is what we're doing. When we catch them, we correct it. They can either get out of our school, or they pay tuition.
Okay, Mr. Chair, correction, because you just lied. You said you, we're correcting it, and you can report it again. Now I'm asking you to tell me when I reported it the first time, because y'all going to tell me, Jack, so how did I know anything to report anything? Now, I'm second. so how did I know anything to report anything? Now I'm sick and tired of you sitting there.
I don't know that you reported any kids to the state.
It came out your mouth just now.
I said, you can go to the state and talk about the school again. That's what I said. You can report to the school, you can report to the state something about our school again.
And when did I do it the first time, Mr.?
That's not what we're here for.
No, but you need to stop lying.
Ms. Freeman, you've been watching too much TV. Let's move on, we got business to take care of.
Jason, Jim, I'm talking.
Well, Ms. Freeman, it's ridiculous.
You can say whatever.
It's not the Denise Freeman Show, it's the Lincoln County Board of Education.
Well, it's not the Jim.
Let's move on. Thank you.
You want to say. No, I'm not.
What other questions do you have on this? Is it the student?
No, y'all want to be on, not just, go ahead, Jason.
Is it the student?
Jason, you need to back off, and you need to back off right now.
Ms. Freeman?
You need to back off.
It's not about backing off.
Let me finish what I got to say.
Well, finish your statement, I mean, stop just accusing. We've said what we've done. I mean, if you're not going to, if you can say something new, that's fine, but if you're just going to repeat that Dr. Light, Ms. Arthur, Ms. Acock before her made a mistake, we're not going to take them to jail.
Ain't nobody ask you to. You want to be an idiot tonight? God bless you, may heaven smile upon you. I'm fixing to put Songs 109 down and I'm going to walk out of here and go not get my blood pressure up because number one, you're being disrespectful and you don't need to be. I have a right to ask my questions, you have the right to either answer them or sit over there and keep your mouth shut. But you do not have the right to talk to me like you ain't got sense God gave a Billy goat. Now that you don't have the right to do. Now you might think you got white privilege with some black folk, you ain't got jack with this one. You need to do your job and leave me alone.
All right, so we have a proposal, we have a, not a proposal, we have a request from parents to bring their students to pay tuition for their student in our school. They're non-residents, so they will have to do, they're from Carolina, so they will have to pay tuition.
Do y'all have, Ms. Arthur, do y'all have, any of y'all principals have a policy in place to monitor that? I mean, it shouldn't be that hard for this to actually happen.
We actually, I went through all the permanent records and when we know about something like that, then we ask, go to the parent person, of course, and then we get them to fill out the paperwork. And when I came on board, we realized that when I was going through the permanent records.
So, so if you do have a question like that, I guess at the beginning of each year, is there some kind of?
Yes, sir, when we go through all the permanent records and the student information sheets, they go home and they come back and we check those against the permanent records. And that's when we found that, and that's when I found it.
I don't want to micromanage, but I did want to ask the question.
And a lot of times when they, when they come, they'll have a statement saying that they're going to build a home, they're going to break ground, and they actually have a well there and have a water bill and all that, and we give them so many days, you know, to let us know. And we check it, and when we check it and they're not actually building, then we go to them and say, you know, you've got to be a resident.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question on his question. So you're telling me you can, so now I'm getting, can you be a dual resident of South Carolina and Georgia?
People can be dual residents.
No, but you have to have a dwelling. So I see y'all trying to pretty it up and make it pass, but right is right and wrong is wrong. And this is just wrong. And you can call it the Denise Freeman Show, thank you for that honor, I'm glad you bestowed it on me, you can call it whatever you want to call it. Because at the end of the day, I answer to who I answer to. But you're not going to dissuade me from getting to the facts, just because y'all want to be dumb and ignorant, I'm not falling into that trap. So.
Why do you insult us so much?
I'm going to ask what I got.
Does it make you feel good to insult us?
You the one talking about you and Jim, the Denise Freeman Show and all your crazy stuff. So if you can't take it, don't dish it.
You need a motion to?
I do.
I make a motion that we go forward.
Do we approve the request? We have a motion by Mr. Hyman to approve this request.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? Opposed? Four to one. We have a second non-resident enrollment request. Please look at that list.
Board members, you can also read the comment that is there from the parent.
This is also an elementary school student, it's been approved by Ms. Arthur.
Mr. Chair, how long has this student been enrolled?
Ms. Arthur, is this a third grader as well? The one that you handed me today? Don't say the name.
Okay, um, yes, sir.
I thought so.
Have they been there the whole time?
Yes, ma'am.
So paid through?
Yes, ma'am.
So why didn't we catch this one?
Same scenario, Ms. Freeman.
Convenient.
I have a question. So at this point, Ms. Arthur, has all the records been audit or are you still going through?
Well, today, what happens, a lot of times, people will give us a third-party affidavit saying that they live with someone. And we check it, and they're actually living with a person at that time. And then when we look at the records again, they may not be there anymore. And so when that happens, we have to get them to bring another, you know, two other proofs of residency. When they can't produce it, then we have to, you know, tell them, you've got to live here or you've got to live with someone or give, you know, guardianship. They can do that. A lot of people give guardianship to their mother, so the children's grandmother, different scenarios happen. And when we find out about them, you know, I do, I bring it to Dr. Light's attention. We have another one today that got stopped this morning in our parking lot for speeding. And the officer asked her what her address was and she couldn't tell him. And so, I mean, we found out that she doesn't live here, so we've got to follow through on that one. So it changes, you know, just because they put it on the student information sheet doesn't necessarily mean that that's what it is the entire year. And as we find out, or somebody tells us, or we mail, a lot of times you'll mail things to students and they come back. And then when they come back, we have to say, well, this is the address we have. We'll reach out to the parents and, you know, then they'll share. Well, we never built or we never got there. And so that's how some of these happened, because I did check the records when I became principal, started looking at those and questioning, you know, why do we keep getting this mail back, you know, why is this affidavit says this, but they're not actually there? I did a house visit on one of the families and they were not there. And, you know, so that's how you find out, you just have to just kind of, you know, just with return mail and checking all the affidavits and things like that.
And it's also, I mean, because some of this is rental, and so if they can be renting a house at the beginning of the school year in kindergarten, and for whatever reason, they're not, you know, they pick another house in Washington or McCormick, and so that changes, but if they're like the kids, you know, they try to keep them in, and unless you're personal, you know something about them, you may or may not know that they're not renting there anymore.
Like the student that we have today, she was renting a home from a local resident. And I called a lady today and she hasn't answered my call back yet. But we drove out and it doesn't appear that anyone's living there. So I've got to follow through on that one as well. And that was brought to our attention because she was stopped for a traffic violation in our parking lot. And so that, I mean, it's very random as to how we find out these things. And it happens at all the schools that we try to catch. Do what's right.
So when people, Mr. Chair, can I ask the recorders to?
Go ahead.
Ms. Arthur. So when people enroll their children, they don't have to show ID, driver's license or anything?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
So if they had South Carolina driver's license, that should have put a flag. And the reason I'm saying this, because one of the children, according to people in the community, they see the parents bringing this child for the last few years from South Carolina, because they work, a lot of our folks work in Carolina, and they know who is breaking the law bringing kids over here, and that was brought to my attention recently. And so it's just that we, I'm glad that they think we're a great school system, that's a plus. But my thing is you punish our students for lying, for cheating, for breaking the rules. And for me, as a board member until December 31st, it's like a double standard for adults. It's okay for them to lie, cheat and break the rules, and they get rewarded because their kids get the stack. But when our students break the rules, they get suspended, in-house, outside, or whatever. But they have rules in your, in all of, not just yours, I'm talking all the administration, all the schools have the handbooks, and there's rules, regulations and policy. So I'm getting outside the box and looking at the bigger picture as to how this action that's being taken is going to make people who follow the rules feel, if there is no punishment, even if it's for a year or six months or the rest of the year, to me,
when this brought to our.
But that's why I was asking, and my board members wanted to call your name as someone that I was being negative to, no. I just want an answer. And I'm going to ask the questions when nobody else will, because you don't know unless you ask.
Yes, ma'am. And as soon as it's brought to our attention, we do research it and look, and like I said, one of the children, they said they lived here. And we drove out there and then multiple times, not just once. You know, and people are people. Sometimes they're truthful and sometimes they're not. That's why I'm bringing them to you all, so that we can make it right, because if you're going to charge one child that's out of state tuition, you need to charge them all. That's how I feel.
Yeah.
That's why you have them.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the second request, enrollment request. Other questions about that? Okay. I make a motion, do we accept this non-resident enrollment request?
I'm saying.
And a second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? Opposed? Four to one. We have seven policies for review. Let Dr. Light talk us through those.
Policies for review are GBN, GCRD, IEA, IHAC, IHAD, KM and MDA. Those are all for review and to remain as written.
Any questions for any of those policies? Okay, moving on to superintendent's reports.
First one is just an information item for the board to let them know that Matt Posse is expanding his offerings to a Lincoln Financial Group offering. That Lincoln Financial Group is going to be an additional retirement benefit plan that is going to be offered, and as always, he has to have the 10 participants for it to be approved, and he does have more than 10 participants. So that will actually fit, and if you get a question, then he did meet the 10 people minimums. Next one down is CTAE review, and we have talked in this room multiple times about our CTAE review. We got a very positive review. It was done virtually because of the lack of travel. But we got a very positive setting, and I want to congratulate not only Ms. Joyner, yeah, Ms. Jordan, but congratulate everyone in the CTAE program and the high school leadership for all that they have done to support the CTAE. The positive accolades that were received was the business involvement and community involvement, the pathways offered as a district grants used to provide financial support for the programs. This one actually goes back to Ms. Buffett and her group, the drawdowns and 100% use of the entire grant. System invested in CTAE programs using state and local monies. The advisory board handbook was the first that they had seen, and they did openly admit that they were going to steal that and share it with some districts. The number of student organizations available for student participation, student competitions with their organizations and their skill sets. We had 16 CNAs for such a small district, they were very impressed with that. We had a state officer coming out of our district, the CTAE inventory handbook, dual enrollment for CTAE children, removing barriers for our children to participate, adding science pathways to CTAE and the chamber support. There was four recommendations for us to improve, which you would expect there would always be some. The CPI report for CTAE teachers is difficult and it continues to change, so to continue to work on that. We need to put in our five-year plan industrial certification for all of our teachers in CTAE, add person responsible for Title IX and Title IV to the website and the equipment inventory update annually. So again, I want to congratulate all of our CTAE folks in our high school for that. I want to recommend that we have two learn-from-home days or virtual days that will be in October. Those will still be teaching and learning days, it'll be on October 26th and 27th. The students will be home, learning from home as a virtual learner. They'll use their Chromebooks at home or their packets, but we're going to use those two days to bring in furniture and prepare for the new students coming back on October 28th. So we need time to move furniture, we need time to, for the distance teachers and the face-to-face teachers to share information. It's going to take time to put all of that together. So I'm recommending that we do learn-from-home days, they will still count as student learning days. And then the next one down is a seamless summer meals extension. We found out Friday. Currently, I believe everybody is aware that all of our students, and only students, but all of our students receive free meals every day. And the reason for that is the ag department at the federal level decided to extend the seamless summer for every child to receive a free meal every day, so they get lunch and breakfast, actually, so two meals. And they were doing that through the end of the school in December. Well, Friday, they extended that through June 30th. So every child in the school district gets a free lunch and a free breakfast, if they want it, every day. So if I ruined a high school mom's plan because she's still sending lunch money, I'm sorry, but everybody gets a free lunch. Now the extras are just extras, so you have to pay for extras. But everybody gets a free lunch or a free breakfast through June 30th. And that extension was done on Friday, so that's also very good news. That's all I have for the report, sir.
Question.
Good.
Mrs. Superintendent, I have a transportation question that was brought to my attention.
Okay.
There is a report that there are two buses that go down the same street, and on one side, one of the buses stops and picks up black students. And on the other side, another bus stops and picks up white students. Now, I would not be as concerned if this not came from a very good source when they lodged a complaint and they, the information, I should say.
So, as always, my sources will remain anonymous, so that they won't have to be treated like I am. But this is a great concern, so if you could check into this before the next board meeting.
Can you tell me which street that is, Ms. Freeman?
I can tell you the bus numbers and everything after this, yes, I will give that information.
Next items, the executive session.
But let me also say this, Mr. Chair, there are videos and pictures to, from what I understand, to support this complaint.
And I would also encourage board members, when you have things that you think are issues, bring them to the superintendent when they happen.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I am one of the few people that do call the superintendent. This one came to me, and I'm giving it to you as it came, because it was last minute, so I'm giving it to you last minute as it came. So had it came before, I just talked to him today, was it today or yesterday, today?
Both.
Yesterday.
Yesterday and today.
And today.
Mm-hmm.
So I do give him things previously, so I know he must be talking to your...
I just made a comment that encourage all the board members.
And I was on one...
All right, we have, next on the agenda is the executive session.
I'll make a log when we go into that.
Thank you. And a second by Mr. Madison. Now I want to call our meeting back to order.
I'll give it back to the principal.
It is recommended by the superintendent, and I make a motion that we increase the substitute teacher's pay for the schedule presented, $5 per day, and also require an eight-hour day.
My second.
My second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? Opposed? Four to one. It is recommended, and I make a motion that we have Ms. Spurlock, Ms. Molly Spurlock, work with the virtual students as an after-school. We approve extended day for Ms. Molly Spurlock to work with virtual students at a cost of $6,500 per nine weeks.
My second.
Second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? Opposed? It is recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Ms. Coretta Norman as a parapro for the elementary school. You have a second by Ms. Barstow, all in favor? It is recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Ms. Paula Henderson as a parapro for the elementary school. You have a second by Ms. Barstow, all in favor? Opposed?
I'm second.
It is recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ms. Tanya Prescott from the, from the position of parapro at the elementary school effective 10/12/2020. You have a second by Ms. Barstow, all in favor?
Question for you, what was, she resigned?
Yes, resignation. All in favor? I have a... Need a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Right, second by Ms. Barstow.